Hi, this is Mayor Drew Boyle, City of El Segundo, kicking off this town hall with AQMD. We're very thankful to bring everyone together. I just wanted to say a few words. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues. Tracy Miller-Zarnike, who's the Chair of our Environmental Committee, as well as my colleague, Ryan Baldino, City Council Member. But first, I just wanted to acknowledge that it's been quite the journey and we spent a lot of time and effort. And I think this, this group right here is, there's a lot of elected officials and appointed officials that have been working on this problem for quite some time. And this is really indicative of all the work and effort that's gone into this. So I know I'm very anxious as our colleagues to hear about the residents, what their concerns are in this town hall format. And I want to thank Senator Ben Allen, I'm looking right at you for your support in your office, especially as it relates to fence line monitoring, source monitoring, and of course, Assembly Member Al Marisucci. I don't, I'm sure you're here. You've been an incredible advocate for us as well. And I can say that almost thirty years now I've lived in El Segundo, the number one question I would get from people that were unfamiliar to the area was, when it related to the environment anyways, well, how is air quality in El Segundo? And it's something that we never, I never really felt confident answering definitively. And so I'm really grateful for the fact that we're going to have fence line monitoring as well as source monitoring going forward. And I'm really thankful to everybody that's been involved in bringing this town hall together and getting us closer to a long-term solution. So thank you all for being on, and I'm going to turn it over to Tracy Miller-Zarnike.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being here. So yes, my name is Tracy Miller-Zarnike. I serve as the Chair, as Mr. Boyle said, for our Environmental Committee, but today I'm your moderator, just here to facilitate discussion with so many people that are vital to this situation here. And at this point, I'll say we in El Segundo are grateful that when we put out a call to all relevant municipal and legislative partners about how we wanted our constituents to know the people actually care about Hyperion effects El Segundo, we got more participation than we have Zoom boxes for. So I want to say we may not get to hear from everyone on this call tonight. But we're going to do our best to make sure everybody's perspective is heard and that we've answered all the questions that have been submitted. The important thing about all the folks that are on this call, I think, is that they will hear directly the concerns as we all move forward and think about how to work towards answering or improving on those concerns. So I also should note that we decided to do this virtually to allow for attendance from people from all over the state and access to more of our constituents to watch from anywhere, anytime, and more effectively at their later convenience. So with that, I'm going to go around the panel and ask each participant that I think might be speaking tonight to please share your name, your role, and how you work to keep Hyperion a better neighbor or working properly. So let's start with our friends in AQMD. I'll throw it to Sarah first.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Sarah Reese. I'm the Deputy Executive Officer for Planning, Rules, and Implementation at South Coast. And as my title suggests, I'm in charge of air quality planning for the region, as well as developing rules to, for different measures to reduce air pollution in the region.
Great. Thank you, Sarah. And now Jason.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Lo. I'm the Deputy Executive Officer for the Monitoring Analysis Division here at South Coast AQMD. My role is to run air monitoring operations, whether it be through our permanent air monitoring network or doing special monitoring investigations. So my role here would be to provide technical support on any monitoring technologies or plans that would be produced as part of this.
Great. Thank you, Jason. And Angela?
Hello, my name is Angela Shibata. I'm the Senior Air Quality Engineering Manager that oversees the Waste Management Permitting Team. Oh, my, my, you went off. The, I oversee the permitting team that handles the permitting processing for Hyperion's sewage treatment plant.
Great. Thank you. And Victor?
Good evening. I'm Victor Yip. I'm the Assistant Deputy Executive Officer for the Compliance and Enforcement Division at South Coast AQMD. And so I oversee the inspectors that are out in the field, conducting onsite inspections, responding to notifications from the facility, responding to public complaints, and taking enforcement actions. So my role here tonight is to talk about some of our enforcement efforts.
All right. Thank you. And Nicholas?
Yeah, thank you. Sorry, I'm not on camera. My son's Little League workouts, which El Segundo's well aware of the importance of that. But I'm the Assistant Chief Deputy Counsel for the South Coast AQMD. In that role, I review and process the notice of violations that are issued for facilities. And I think, as the community knows, there has been a numerous amount of notice of violations alleging public nuisance from the site. And we're also, my, my department and the attorneys in our section are also responsible for handling the order for abatement that's pending against El Segundo. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Nicholas. Now we'll shift to the City of Los Angeles and Tracy.
Hello, everybody. Tracy Menemidi. I am the Chief Operating Officer for the City of Los Angeles, L.A. Sanitation and Environment Department. My role is supporting all of the activities across our department, but primarily working with our water reclamation plants on the daily activities, the planning, capital work, operations, and also on the recycled water programs. Good to be here tonight. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, fellow Tracy. And now Ryan Jackson.
Hi, folks. I'm Ryan Jackson. I'm Mayor Bass's Public Works Director. I'm really happy to be here this evening. Good to be with Tracy. Tracy and I get to work really closely together. I have a pretty broad scope in this role, inclusive of most of L.A.'s infrastructure. But Hyperion's at the top of the list. We talk about this on a regular basis. And so I feel very close to plant operations. I feel very close to capital planning for the plant. And I do my best to advocate through our budget process with our city council to make sure that the plant's needs are fully funded.
Great. Thank you, Ryan. And Raul? We see you're unmuted, Raul, but we don't hear you. Give him a minute. He might be having technical difficulties. This is inevitable on these. Raul, I'm going to come back to you in a bit and ask Alicia, perhaps, to entertain, to introduce yourself.
Hi, everyone. Alicia Chang. I'm with the Department of Public Health. I'm the Regional Health Officer for the South Bay areas, as well as East L.A. County. So I work with Dr. Barbara Ferrer and our Health Officer, Montu Davis. But obviously, because L.A. County is so large, we're further subdivided. And so my regions are South Bay, L.A. City, down to San Pedro, and East L.A. County. My primary role is to assess and monitor the public health needs of my regions and also oversee the implementation of all the public health activities. One of the biggest roles that we've had over the past few years is communicable disease control, obviously COVID, and pox and those kinds of things. But our work encompasses environmental health activities as well. And with me is Raul, who hopefully will be able to unmute. He's our subject matter expert from the Environmental Health Program. And maybe he'll be able to join us.
Let's give Raul another chance now. Let's see if we can hear from him. If not, we'll, we'll keep going and come back later. All right. Hearing silence. I'm going to now toss it over to our Senator, Ben Allen. Oh, you're on mute. Somebody's got to do that, too. Thank you for taking the bullet first on this.
Well, thank you so much, Tracy. I really do appreciate it. And this is, this is, I'm both an important discussion webinar, but also a moment of some celebration. Obviously, thank you so much to the City of El Segundo for pulling us all together to talk about Hyperion and the air quality protocols that have now been instituted to ensure the safety of, of, of the El Segundo and broader South Bay community while also working with our partners and friends from the City of Los Angeles. I'm really glad to see the Air Quality Management District, the City of L.A., L.A. Department of Public Health, all, all here tonight. I, myself, was just at Hyperion just last week to check in on the facility as it continues to recover and improve its operations. And, you know, I think one of the things that has continued to really be clear to me is the importance of transparency and communications as, as just being really key to improving, you know, the, the relationship between the, the plant and, and the folks in El Segundo after that terrible environmental disaster that we all remember back in July 2021, when there was that major sewage spill out into the bay. So, you know, obviously, folks like Mayor Drew and others, so many of my friends from El Segundo were talking to me extensively about the odors and hazardous emissions that were coming from the Hyperion plant and impacting El Segundo residents. And, and then, you know, our, our good Assembly Member Al Marisucci stepped up, put forward AB 1216 that I co-authored, that became a really important measure to address these issues that we, we successfully navigated through the Senate, through both houses of the legislature, but obviously I was taking the lead on the Senate side. But, but also not after some really, you know, not, 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 not without having some really fruitful and important conversations with the City of L.A. to figure out a way to craft the bill that met the needs of the residents of El Segundo, while also addressing some of their infrastructural concerns over there. So this is a bill that's a common sense solution to protect public health. It's a simple accountability and transparency measure that requires fence line monitoring around large sewage treatment plants so that we can ensure that, you know, that the residents are protected and that the air that they and their families are breathing is safe. You know, it was my sense, and I certainly know Al Marisucci's sense, that we needed to push Hyperion to do a little more than just meet their legal obligations. We, we needed to, to do more to, to ensure that those legal obligations went a little further than what was currently in place, at least previously in place. We had to do more for our constituents to, to protect their health and, and quality of life. So to this bill, ultimately, it's, it's bigger than just Hyperion. I mean, it, it impacts sewage facilities now throughout the state that are close to residential areas. And we, we, it's our strong feeling that we should all know if our air is safe to breathe. And so this bill made it through the legislature, it was signed by the governor. It's now going to go into place, go into effect on, on January 1st. And, you know, it, we now have all these, these monitoring systems that will be in place as a result of the bill. So I'm just proud that after two years of pushing for this, current and future residents of El Segundo can feel better about Hyperion. They, they will now know exactly what's happening with emission levels from the site. It's going to require transparency. I also know that the folks at Hyperion have committed to continual conversation and dialogue and communication with the City of El Segundo. And I want to thank them for their openness. I want to thank our partners in the City of L.A. for, for, for recognizing the, the legitimate concerns of the folks in El Segundo. I also want to thank the leadership from the city for, for taking this on. You know, Mayor Drew Boyle particularly has just been such a great champion for residents on this topic. And, and, you know, this is not the be all or end all of this bill, but, but it's, it's something that I know is going to make a difference. And not just for people in and around Hyperion, but up and down the state who will, could be similarly impacted with, with, with similar treatment plants near them. So, so it's exciting. You know, and I'm looking forward to the discussion.
Great. I'm glad you could be here and for all the work you've done outside of here. All right. Next, we'll introduce Karen.
Hi, everyone. My name is Karen Calderon. I am a field representative for Congressman Ted Lou. I cover the City of El Segundo as one of the areas in my portfolio. And I'm really happy to be here with such an impressive panel. And so I'm very happy to talk alongside everyone tonight and, and see the progress that's been made.
Great. Thank you, Karen. And let's hear from Aaron.
Hey, everyone. Name is Aaron Forberger. I'm a Legislative Assistant for Assembly Member Marisucci. I was the Lead Staffer on Assembly Bill 1216.
Great. Thank you. And I'm going to actually loop back to Raul before I forget to do that. Raul, are you here with us?
Good evening. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Sorry. My, my microphone works, but my camera doesn't work. But I'll go ahead and introduce myself. I'm Raul Sobero. I'm a Program Manager with the Department of Public Health, Office of Environmental Justice and Climate Health. And we mainly provide information to residents related to living near a wastewater treatment plant. And we're also here to address any potential health concerns that residents may have.
All right. Thank you, Raul. We're, we're glad you're here, even if we can't see you. Laura, your turn.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me. Laura Morita. I'm Senior Deputy for Environmental Justice with the Office of L.A. County Supervisor Holly Mitchell. And so in my role, I lead our environmental work at the county level. And then the supervisor also sits on the South Coast AQMD Board. So happy to be here to listen and continue to be in dialogue with my colleagues here and just help facilitate continued conversation on this issue. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Laura. And last but not least, Mr. Ryan Baldino.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ryan Baldino, El Segundo City Council Member. I, myself, along with Carol Purstek, Tracy Miller-Zarnike, worked on the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I also want to thank everyone for joining us today. This was no small feat to get this many people together.
Absolutely. We appreciate that all these calendars have a line for this. And we do have other folks on the call who may chime in if necessary. If you do get asked to jump in, please introduce yourself as well when you do that. So to move us forward, we are going to jump into some questions. And I just want to say, to reiterate how this works, for those of you who are attending and watching, if you have a question you'd like to submit, please type your question in the Q and A box, and we'll do our best to address them at the end of the discussion, time permitting. But know that the city received around fifty questions in advance of this town hall. And where there were duplicate or similar questions, they've emerged into one for efficiency's sake. And please also note that if there was colorful language included in the submission of questions, the emotion is not lost on us. But the fact that this may be viewed by younger audiences has been taken into account. So there might be a little editing in there. But the questions that we'll cover here have been arranged into three topic areas. One is Hyperion operations. Another is health concerns. And a third is legislation, overview, and enforcement. That's the order of business tonight. And we will start from the top with Hyperion operations. So who can share with the world who've tuned in, who runs Hyperion?
Okay, thank you, Tracy. I'll start with that. So as I mentioned, I'm with the City of Los Angeles, L.A. Sanitation and Environment Department, and we are responsible for the operation of Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant. Our department is the third largest department in the city that's council-controlled. We have thirty-eight hundred employees. And our mission is to protect public health and the environment. The core programs that we have are Clean Water, which is the wastewater program, as well as Solid Resources. We do the daily trash pickup and all of the complex programs that go along with that. We also handle Stormwater Program. For the Clean Water Program in the City of L.A., we have four treatment plants. And Hyperion is our flagship facility. This plant treats eighty-five percent of all of the wastewater that we collect. And at Hyperion, we also receive flows from neighboring contract cities. El Segundo is one of them. Hyperion was established in nineteen twenty-five, way back. Next year's our hundred-year anniversary. Back then, it was a very, very simple plant. It has now evolved over all of these years into the very complex facility that it is today. We are regulated by the U.S. EPA and the Regional, California Regional Water Quality Control Board. And on a daily basis, at Hyperion, we treat about two-hundred-and-fifty-million gallons a day. So to put that in context, that's about two Rose Bowls of flow that we treat at the plant every day. And prior to this bill, Hyperion did have eleven years of compliance and recognition by the National Association of Clean Water Agencies. And we had a Platinum Performance Status. So we're talking about the flooding incident. That was a very, very unfortunate event that set us back and created many challenges for us. But really, we are here tonight, as we have been in the past, to demonstrate our commitment to working with the City of El Segundo, our neighbors, into improving the quality of life, to reducing the emissions, and really, really doing our best and putting our best foot forward to be good neighbors. This is truly essential and important to us. I want to turn it over to Ryan Jackson, just to say a few words as well.
Sure. Thanks, Tracy. Really just pleased that the mayor's office gets to work so closely with L.A. sanitation on Hyperion issues day to day. Tracy stated it, but I'll reiterate, it's an issue of huge importance for us. We don't like being in bad grace with neighbors. And we've heard lots of comments that folks aren't feeling satisfied with us as a neighbor. So we, we hold that on high. We've been working steadily to run the plant operationally very smoothly and capital plan appropriately so that we can reduce the impacts on folks. Didn't want to also mention, just in terms of who runs Hyperion, it's a good question, but also a lot of the folks on the call today helped to run Hyperion. Sanitation in the City of L.A. is in charge of day-to-day operations. But as we've seen recently with new legislative changes, the county, regional, state, federal level, the rules and regulations for how wastewater are processed help to run the plant and closely inform how we operate and maintain our compliance. So just wanted to note that. And also note that we have a developing partnership with the City of El Segundo. Wanted to thank the city manager and also Council Member Baldino for really supporting this. We've been fast friends, I'll say, for you and I in my, my short time here with the Bass administration. And it's important that your feedback also helps inform decision-making. We have been speaking regularly. And feedback that we get from El Segundo goes into the decision-making process for how the plant is run as well.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy and Ryan. And I'm guessing one of you will answer this next question. In short, can you please describe what happened in July of 2021 that brought us here today? And as part of that, can you clarify what sort of debris and operational issue caused that backup?
Okay, so I, I will keep it short. In essence, what happened on that fateful day is that in our headworks building, which is the very front end, the very entry point of our treatment plant, we have bar screens. And the job of those bar screens is to take the first amount of debris and trash that comes into the plant. That is removed so that it won't create problems on the downstream treatment processes. And what happened was those bar screens jammed. They became inundated with all of this trash. Normally, we run three, maybe four of our eight bar screens. But on this day, all eight of our bar screens became blinded by trash. And as you can imagine, that did not let the water continue and flow through in the treatment process. So the elevation in the tanks in the headworks building went, got higher and higher until it got to the point of spilling over. Once it spilled over, it went into the streets of the treatment plant. And we have a storm drain system in the treatment plant. And that's where that water went. It went into our treatment plant's storm drain system, which ultimately works its way out into our outfall. That's the large pipe that takes the water from the treatment plant out into Santa Monica Bay, which is normally treated water. In this case, the water had not been fully treated. So that's what happened. And maybe I'll get into this in the next question, Tracy, just about everything that we did in response to, to try to correct the situation.
Yes. So, yes, the operational concerns that led to that. And tell us a bit, if you can summarize, what facility improvements and staffing changes have been made since that incident?
Okay, so we have invested and are investing on the capital improvement side, roughly a hundred-and-fourteen million dollars towards eight major projects to control odors. These projects were already in the planning stages or in construction when the incident occurred. So we just want to, to emphasize the importance of odor control and how much it took a priority for us at the plant regardless of that flooding situation. So we have those projects, odor control, like scrubbing facilities that pull the foul odor and clean the air before it is emitted, and other projects were underway. One of the big projects that's really important and part of the administrative order that AQMD has issued is that we replace tank covers on our primary sedimentation tanks. And this is straightforward, but very essential action for us to implement to control the odors. We are happy to report that our compliance date for December 31st to finish all of the tank covers for the in-service tanks has been complete. We just finished it like yesterday. Still doing a lot of fine tuning, you know, and straightening, making sure everything's placed correctly. But the tank covers are all in place for that December 31st deadline. Our next and final deadline is in June, where we need to finish the covers for the out-of-service tanks. So we have seen a reduction in the odors. We think very much that it is related to the fact that we've made this progress over the last two years, really, to finish the tank covers. So we're happy to report that that has, has really come to fruition. There are a lot of other activities and facility improvements that we made that I will get into in terms of Congressman Lou's funding for facility improvements to our control system. We've also implemented new and updated standard operating procedures to make sure that we appropriately respond to any kind of emergency events and generally have beefed up the maintenance SOPs that we had in place. We also have initiated new protocols for communicating with our neighbors. So Diane, I know that our manager, Tanya Shelton, has been working very closely with you to make sure that we share our information so that you can make it available to the El Segundo residents. And also that there are emails that can be sent to, that are sent to all of you folks that have signed up. So you can go to our website at lacdSan.org and sign up to be on our mailing list and receive all of the notifications for activities that are, that are happening. And I think I'll, I'll finish it there, Tracy.
Okay. I, I know we're going to circle back to you later because I do know that the tank cover project may be done, but there are still smells happening here in El Segundo. So we'll, we'll circle back to that in a little bit. Because I want to, I want to, I want to try to get through the operational overall first, and then we'll come back. Let me ask next. How can the community read more about this progress if they want to spend more time, more in detail? Because we know that there was thirty-three points of improvement that the L.A. Sanitation Ad-Hoc Committee recommended in the wake of the July 21st spill. I think, I think the City of El Segundo has an answer for that.
Yes. Thanks, Tracy. So as you said, after this happened, the Los Angeles sanitation created their own ad hoc committee. The goal was to find out what happened, find out what needs to be done to fix it, and find out what we can do to make sure it never happens again. From that came a list of thirty-three action items. What the City of El Segundo has done in cooperation with the City of Los Angeles is when we obtain information about progress, we are putting into a dashboard that's going to be available and is available tonight on the city's website on our Hyperion page. This dashboard will list each of the thirty-three requirements from the Ad-Hoc Committee and tell you what's been completed, what still needs to be completed. This is possible, in, in great part, due to the great communication we now have with the City of Los Angeles and the mayor's office. But anyone from El Segundo who wants to check on the progress of Hyperion today and going forward will be able to do that on the El Segundo City's website.
Thank you for that. All right. Other operational issues. When will all the flares be modernized and in compliance? Can you guys answer that? Someone?
Okay, I'll take that one. We are working with the AQMD under an abatement order, order for our flares. One of the requirements is that we completely replace and install new flares. So we have a project and hiring a consultant is underway right at this time that will provide us with a pre-designed report, that then we can turn that into the AQMD for their review and approval. We will also need to submit an application to AQMD for construction of the, the facility. So once we go through that process and receive our, our permit to construct from the AQMD, the order allows us sixty months to complete that project. It's quite an extensive effort and over a hundred-million-dollar estimate for the capital cost. And it will require that we demolish a certain space at the plant to make room for these new facilities. So in order to save time, we are working to do some parallel work and, and clean up the site and have it ready to go once we get the approvals to start construction.
Thank you. You did mention something about communications earlier, but I have a specific question from the audience prior. Has the public warning system been improved, or how, when, will it, how and when will it be improved if it's not there yet? Like, for example, is there a system in place for flare notifications similar to how refineries have to do that?
Well, we do have a system in place, and we, we really worked after the Well, we do have a system in place and we, we really worked after this incident to, to, to make it stronger and more uh, more stable. And that is in working with our uh, community uh, outreach director. Um, she makes sure that whenever we have notifications for, in this case, we're talking about flares and the usage of the flares, that that notification goes out to um, our mailing list. Um, and so those notices will go out to provide advance notice of the planned activities. Um, normally our flares are only used uh, about two weeks a year, um, primarily because part of our, our, our bioenergy facility needs to go down for maintenance. And during that time, usually the bioenergy facility is using the gas. Um, and we don't need to use our flares. But when the bioenergy facility is going through its annual maintenance, then they can't take the gas and we have to flare it. So that's the primary time when we're flaring, uh, about two weeks out of um, three hundred and sixty-five days. And we do get notices um, out to the residents to make sure they're aware that that activity is taking place.
Okay, thank you. Um, I heard you mention some pricey upgrades a, a minute ago. So I want to ask uh, about federal funding that we understand has been set aside for Hyperion. Um, maybe Karen can tell us when it's coming in and how Hyperion is allowed to apply it? Anything on that?
Yeah, of course. Um, so Congressman Lou was able to secure a three point five billion dollars in uh, federal appropriations for modernization efforts at Hyperion. Uh, the project itself is referred to as the Hyperion Water Reclamation Plant Modernization Bill for Still Prevention and Containment. Um, and so the goal of this project is really to improve the monitoring and control systems and reduce the chance of potential sewage spills in the future. Um, and while the funding has been appropriated to the EPA, it has not yet been awarded to the city of L A. Uh, the city of L A is still working on their application, but once the details of the project itself have been completed, the EPA will be working with the city to disperse those funds and, and how they'll be used.
Okay, great, thank you. The sooner the better, right? Um, okay, now it's time to ask the question, the top operational question we received. What is being done to stop the smell here in El Segundo? Residents living near the plant have reported there are more odor issues following the July twenty-one incident than there were before. Will there ever be a practical solution to preventing odors? Who's gonna take that one?
Okay, I will, I will take that one and that is um, that is a big question. Um, first again, just to reiterate how important it is to the city of Los Angeles to do everything possible to control odors. Um, we do recognize that this is a wastewater treatment facility and odors are a natural occurrence. Um, but in every way possible, we are working with the AQMD um, holistically in regard to the abatement order and the fifty-three requirements of the abatement order. Um, we've got two left, two left, and otherwise we have um, completed and are in compliance with the requirements of that abatement order. Um, I think what we want to talk about are, I can get into more specifics about the projects that we're working on that will uh, make a difference in terms of construction. We are, we recently finished refurbishment of our odor scrubbers um, in the primary tank area. This was a requirement of the abatement order. Um, we are also working on another biotrickling filter. Sorry, don't mean to get too technical, but this is another project that's going to really help control odors uh, once it is completed. Um, I mentioned the tank covers. Um, we, we are um, continuing to monitor with the fence line, monitoring the H two S emissions along the perimeter of the plant. And this is something that we voluntarily installed. Um, I think it's about two years ago now. Um, and hopefully that information has been helpful in our attempts to be transparent with the community to show you all um, what those levels are. Um, it's on our website and we can certainly provide you with the uh, uh, website location if you don't know. It's lacitysand.org backslash Hyperion. Um, what else do I want to say? Um, a lot of, as I mentioned, SOPs have been created to also uh, control those odors. Um, and uh, um, additional projects in terms of uh, monitoring and measuring how the scrubbers are working and doing continual maintenance on that are also in place at this time. So we are doing our best and we will continue there. There will be continuous improvement in this area um, for, forever.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I think, yeah, what uh, it's concerning is that, you know, I know residents are reporting in now that like the central monitor has been at four point nine parts per billion now and a lot of today. And so I think the concern of, well, the tank covers were done, but we're still having these levels. So that's, that's kind of where we're, we're wanting to understand why and when things are still happening. So that's, that's good.
Understood, uh, understood. Um, still uh, improvements to be made, but, but uh, we do see that uh, with the standard set at thirty parts per billion, um, it's, it's, it's a lot better at four um, than at thirty. Uh, recognizing that you can still smell um, those emissions even at very low levels. So we, we do understand that and um, we'll continue to strive to get the numbers even lower. There are days where uh, where, where the numbers are, are less than one P P B many days. And we do also get frustrated by the fact that we can't control the wind patterns, the temperature, um, the, you know, velocities of the wind and the direction. And generally speaking, the um, the wind pattern is that in the afternoons, you're gonna get more of the inshore wind and breeze. And it's gonna be bringing it on land as opposed to pushing it out. Um, so that's, tho- those areas, we feel like our hands are tied. There's not a lot that we can do. Um, so we're really just focusing on the corrective actions we can take at the plant.
Yeah, that makes sense. I, we know you can't control the wind, but, but I did learn something on a recent tour of Hyperion. Maybe if I ask you this question that we got from the residents, it'll come out. Um, can someone explain why it seems to smell at the most at odd hours? There are effective residents who suspect that the plant can determine or control when the smell is emitted, such as in the middle of the night. I'll see, maybe you'll answer what I heard on my tour and then I don't have to explain it.
Well, right, we, we, uh, we run our operation twenty-four seven. We don't, we, we don't have a way of controlling emissions of odors at certain times of the day, you know, day or night. Um, it's an operation that happens, it's a natural process and we're just, we just try to keep up with it and, and control it the best we can. So, so um, certainly we, we are not manipulating when odors are emitted.
And I think what I was told, and tell me if this is true by, by an engineer, was that at night, um, the flow slows and may stagnate in places that are more exposed because it's sitting there longer. And that may be a part of why at night some folks smell more than usual. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that, yes, that is definitely the case.
Okay, all right, thank you for con- uh, uh, referring to what I, I had been taught on that tour. I didn't know that, so that was a good learning point for me. Okay, I'm gonna look at the clock, I'm gonna shift us into the health concerns category now. Cause I want to try to hit all these categories before we run out of time together. So I'm gonna start with uh, AQMD folks. Um, can you tell us a little about your role and purview as it relates to health concern? Who gets that?
Yeah, I could go ahead and take that one. Uh, hi again, I'm Victor Yip. Um, so our, our role uh, as it relates to health concerns for Hyperion is, is really the uh, the, the rules that we have in place that, that govern emissions uh, around the, the process. Uh, our enforcement team um, conducts inspections. We evaluate compliance uh, with our rules and reg- regulations. Um, we respond to complaints and when we observe uh, violation, we, we take enforcement action either through a notice to comply, to direct them to take corrective actions for very minor violations or a notice of violation that would address a more serious type of violation. Now those, those NOVs, those citations are referred to our legal department for, uh, for settlement, uh, which could uh, result in a monetary fine. And, and all of that really is, is um, designed to, to achieve deterrence from further violations uh, for emissions that, that, that uh, are in excess of our, our rule limits, permit conditions and um, and, and those types of uh, requirements that are embedded in our, in our rules and regulations.
Okay, thank you Victor. Um, let's ask a similar question then of the, the L A County Public Health folks. Can you tell us your realm of responsibility and how it relates to AQMD and Hyperion?
Sure, this is Raúl Zobero. And uh, we do not have regulatory authority over Hyperion with respect to odors. However, public health can help inform residents and have included information on our website that we can share. And we can share that link with you. Additionally, we have, uh, we have a fact sheet in English and Spanish related to living near a wastewater treatment plant that we can share as well. Uh, and public health does have authority over ocean quality, uh, water quality and beach closures. We also address health-related concerns of sewage spills on streets, on streets that would act with directly contact and pose a health threat to residents and help to communicate health impacts identified by regulatory authorities.
Okay, thank you Raúl. Um, this next one sounds like another AQMD question. What pollutants of concern does Hyperion emit? How and where in the plant are they being measured?
Hello, this is Angela Shibata again. Um, so Hyperion uh, Treatment Plant emits various kinds of compounds, but the ones that are of primary concern um, through this order for abatement uh, are hydrogen sulfide, also known as H two S. That is the compound that tends to smell like rotten eggs. That has been a concern um, from an odor and nuisance perspective. Uh, that is a compound that has been uh, subject to different kind of monitoring requirements through the order for baiting as well. The plant also has different compounds related to their combustion sources, uh, which include carbon monoxide, uh, volatile organic compounds, oxides of nitrogen, oxides of sulfur, particulate matter, et cetera. Uh, those are subject to different kinds of rule requirements and permit conditions that uh, can be measured at the exhaust stacks of that equipment and are subject to routine testing to ensure compliance. Um, but primarily uh, hydrogen sulfide is the one that has been a concern with, in, in particular for the, the nuisance and odor concerns.
Okay, well, thank you for letting us know about other source testing too, like closer to the source. Um, all right, let me see, next question. Um, what agency determines when pollutant releases are health hazards? And do they consider, do they consider and monitor daily exposure versus large, short releases and flares?
So maybe I can take that one. So this is Jason on South Coast AQMD. So um, when looking at air monitoring, um, there are different uh, health thresholds. Some of them are going to be uh, short-term uh, or called acute and others will be uh, long-term, uh, otherwise known as chronic. So we compare um, we compare air measurement values to those um, health-based thresholds uh, determine if there's a potential health impacts. And a lot of these are either determined by National Ambient Air Quality Standards set by U S E P A or they're set, set by um, the Cal Ouija or the Office of Environmental Health Hazards Association. Um, so they, they have, um, their, their sole job is to uh, review and uh, look at the toxicity of these uh, different compounds or effects on, on um, uh, human health um, and uh, cell sees levels, uh, which is a combination of a level or concentration of, of pollutant as well as a duration or time, like in hours or days.
Okay, thank you Jason. All right, now I'm going to throw an simulation of, I think, ten questions. Definitely our top question that we received in advance. Um, and these questions were expressed with many examples and great emotion, just so you all know. Uh, neighbors to the Hyperion plant have described odors that range from rotting fish to chemicals resulting in headaches, nausea, pet illnesses and other symptoms. How do people know that the air they are breathing is safe if they're experiencing these sort of things? Um, is this a public health question?
Yes, you know, uh, as Jason mentioned, uh, you know, there are some health thresholds that are established by either federal or state agencies that we follow. And, but at this point, we're, we're unable to answer this question as we are unaware of any health studies that have been conducted. Uh, but we can provide general facts on, you know, like I mentioned, living near a wastewater treatment plant and information and which includes, includes orders and health effects. And uh, I will be happy to refer you to that, that information.
I can also add to that USC, um, their Office of Environmental Justice Research. They are conducting a study, I believe it began in November of twenty twenty-two, survey-based particularly for El Segundo residents to um, report their symptoms and hopefully generate some data for us in one or two years. And so that doesn't give us any answers now. And it, and, and also have to, you know, I, I do want to preface and, and, and give the caveat that uh, not in El Segundo, but in other parts of the world, um, in communities that live near volcanoes where hydrogen sulfide is emitted. A lot of people have tried looking at the effect of chronic exposure to hydrogen sulfide. And it's been very difficult to show that there's um, any significant health consequence at the low, low levels. Clearly hydrogen sulfide is dangerous at the, you know, we're talking a hundred parts per million. When we can smell, we're talking about parts per billion, so much, much lower, right? And so it is difficult to show that there is um, a long-term health effect. It's definitely noxious for people who can smell it and sensitivity varies across people. Some people are not as bothered, some people will have the, the headaches, some of the respiratory complaints. But truthfully, there's just a dearth of data. We, we don't, we don't have any information. Um, and the Department of Public Health is not the entity to do that kind of research. We're an operational kind of surveillance type of arm.
Okay, that's good to hear that you know of USC's research and will pay attention to that as well. Cause that, we were pleased to hear that they were jumping into this realm also. Okay, um, one more health question, I think it's a health question. Um, when conducting home assessments, vector control has suggested that arrives in the mosquito population has been caused by the Hyperion plant. And as we know, mosquitoes can cause many illnesses. Are the two related and if so, what is being done to address this issue?
Yes, so the Los Angeles County West Vector Control District is the agency that is best positioned to address mosquito abatement issues rela- related to the plant. They monitor mosquito populations and provide mosquito abatement services in the area. And our department works closely with them to help educate communities about mosquito prevention to reduce the risk of disease transmission of West Nile virus and other mosquito-borne illnesses. Uh, we have promoted mosquito prevention and steps people can take to protect themselves with a prevention toolkit on our website. And the campaign name is It's Not Just a Bite. Uh, we have shared this information with cities in L A County to help inform residents and we can share the link to that, that toolkit.
And if I could add to that as well. Um, we do mosquito-borne disease prevention outreach every year. It usually, you know, it follows the summer pattern when the mosquitoes are most active. Uh, we begin with the cities planning and outreach into the cities sometime around May, June. And we actually conduct um, community outreaches. I think in all of the South Bay altogether, um, our teams have done approximately four hundred and eighty outreaches on mosquito-borne illness prevention and handed out twenty-five thousand informational flyers to residents. So, you know, definitely mosquito-borne illnesses is something the public health department tracks. We maintain surveillance of West Nile virus cases. We're also in, right now in the middle of planning and preparation for possible local dengue transmission. I mean, this is actually something that's been seen across California that due to the climate change, mosquito populations are growing. And mosquitoes that carry different diseases that didn't used to be endemic to L A County have now established themselves, such as the Aedes mosquito that carries dengue. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we are monitoring and surveilling. Uh, the vector control program, as Raúl mentioned, they are the ones that actually test the mosquitoes. They have traps in certain areas, I can't tell you exactly what they are, but they will test mosquitoes for different diseases and then they work. but they will test mosquitoes for different diseases, and then they work with us to determine, you know, if there's something odd or different, or um there's some kind of intervention that's needed. Um on the vector control uh website, you can also report and request assistance if you feel like there's a mosquito pool or something that needs to be tested.
Okay, that's good to know. And I'm I'm gonna ask our city folks who are listening, maybe we can make sure we have all the mosquito reporting and fact information on our Hyperion website website page, because it sounds like maybe some folks don't have that information readily available. Um okay, well, thank you for that. And looking at the time, I think we're we're doing okay to try to get through this and still have some time at the end. So we're gonna shift into the legislation overview and enforcement questions now. Um. Let's see, okay. Who has authority over Hyperion and can hold the plant accountable for health and safety concerns? I feel like that's an AQMD question.
Yeah, did I answer that one already regarding our enforcement program, our rules and regulations?
Somewhat. This might be a little redundant in there. I think it I think it probably relates more to if we have this new legislation coming in.
Okay.
Well, you know, are are you still, is it gonna roll out the same way where you'll watch and act upon what that entails?
Oh, okay, right. Um yeah, that one would have to be deferred to a different department here. Uh let me uh let me go offline and and find out.
Okay, and you you did address some of that earlier. Um it might have been just more in relation to to things that are coming up. So let's let's I'll go ahead and move on to the next question, because we have a lot to cover in here. Um so how does the city of El Segundo play a role in this realm of legislation overview and enforcement? I think uh Mr. Baldino, you wanna try that one?
Yes, yes. So the city of El Segundo has no direct control over Hyperion. It is a Los Angeles facility. It is in the city of Los Angeles. It is not within our jurisdiction. We don't have any real management over it. Um what we do have is the ability to advocate on behalf of our residents. We we are responsible for listening to the concerns, elevating those to the correct agencies, be it AQMD, the City of Los Angeles, to help to get the information that people want. So we have been working very hard in the ad hoc committee to answer questions, to make the entire process more transparent. And we are grateful to have worked with Senator Ben Allen and our Assembly Member Meritucci on this legislation, which is going to make fence line monitoring permanent. Um this order of abatement eventually would have been complied with, and those requirements, including fence line monitoring, would have no longer been in effect. But with this legislation, we can guarantee that the fence line monitoring and the source monitoring that we've talked about already are going to continue in perpetuity, and so that we know we can have that transparency ongoing.
Okay, thank you. Um all right, has there been any follow-up to the EPA with the EPA after Ted Lee's initial inquiry in the wake of the Hyperion incident? I remember he your office, Karen, was right out of the gates in like August on this. Has there been continued conversation on this?
Yeah, so we are in communication with the EPA. Um and for context, in that letter, uh Congressman Liu had outlined what the issue was and asked the EPA to conduct an investigation. Uh and the EPA did come out in August of twenty twenty-one and worked alongside the California State Water Resources Control Board and the LA Regional Board. Um and together they gathered information relating to the cause of the sewage spill, the initial response, um and the ongoing um disruption. And so they were able to work together to put together a report. And ultimately, the uh Regional Board uh submitted and finalized that report that describes the EPA and state inspectors' observations, and and that in part that report also includes the notice of violation. Um and so um the EPA was very responsive in terms of Congressman Liu's request for them to come out and take some action and see what was going on, uh which ultimately uh resulted in the notice of violation.
Okay, thank you, Karen, and thank you for your office for jumping in there right away. Um. Okay, so we know that RCTAV twelve sixteen was passed into law in October. And now we're gonna ask Aaron to tell us more about that bill, how it came about, and what it does.
Sure, thanks for the question. Um yeah, the Assembly Member Meritucci started representing El Segundo just actually about a year ago. We uh he was we had redistricting, and we he used to not represent El Segundo, but now he does, and he hit the ground running. Uh he heard concerns from city leaders, and he, you know, he saw kind of the uh violations and complaints from residents, you know, notices of violation from South Coast AQMD, concerns from LA County Department of Public Health. And he thought, well, okay, I I care deeply about the the safety of my the communities I represent, so let's 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 run a bill and let's see what we can do. Um and I think Senator Allen, um you know, stated it pretty eloquently earlier. I'll just kind of go like really quick. I I think what I think some of the big things the bill does, um it's the fence line monitoring for hydrogen sulfide, source testing for nitrogen oxide, volatile organic compounds. Um also requires um Hyperion and uh AQMD to maintain the publicly accessible like data dashboard um and for to to display the the results. Um the implementation deadline of the bill is um January first, twenty twenty-seven. Uh and as the council member mentioned, there's no uh sunset date in the bill, so um as it's written, it, yes, in perpetuity, that is what. So, yeah. Um yeah, and I will just say the member looks forward to, you know, making sure this gets eliminated properly. Um we have in our our district director as well, Melissa Ramoso, is happy to work with you. She couldn't be on this call tonight, but um yeah, that's kind of like the the overview.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now that we have AB twelve sixteen going to place, let's let's reiterate more uh detail about that. So we know that requires testing and monitoring of VOCs and pollutants of concern. Can someone, I'm guessing AQMD folks, just clarify again, what exactly is being monitored, how it will be monitored, and what are the health and safety limits that we're watching for?
Yeah, so maybe I'll address that. So as Aaron had just mentioned, um and also Angela from uh from South Coast AQMD, there are several pollutants that would be looked at, and a lot of that would be the nitrogen oxide, VOCs, and other and H two S. Uh I think those are the pollutants of of concern that are identified in the bill as as well as uh our team uh looking at the uh potential sources that would be uh on site. Um with with that, um the uh measurement technologies will have to review what's in the plan um being submitted by um the facility to determine if they would meet uh acceptance criteria. And again, we're looking for measurements that can be compared against uh health-based thresholds where possible and um make sure that has the detection capability as well as um can measure that that timing. Uh that would be crucial for that kind kind of comparison, and then be able to be incorporated into uh a real-time or near-real-time uh data dashboard that's accessible to the public.
Okay, and I have a related question about uh public access to materials. Uh we have a question, can the public see microclimate and particulate matter maps related to Hyperion? Is that something that's available?
Um I think with the current uh air monitoring that's in the OA um and something that um would be kind of considered with uh within the scope that I had just mentioned within the bill, um those things can be considered, but um probably not likely um with given the foods of concern and and we kind of have to get a better definition of what uh the microclimate uh entails, because that that um probably needs a little bit more tactical definition than I can provide at this point moment in time.
Okay, thank you, Jason. All right, how does testing practically solve the air quality and odor issue? Will there be any any enforcement actions attached if limits are exceeded? Like historically, it seems the only enforcement is a violation for a public nuisance and no monetary fine. Can someone speak to enforcement actions?
Yes, hi, this is Nick Sanchez, South Coast AQMD, so I'll I'll start from the the back of the question. So the authority for the South Coast AQMD, as well as the other districts in the state, is given to us by the California Legislature and and laid out in the Health and Safety Code. And so once we have a permit, rule, or other violation, like the legislation that you're talking about, we establish, you know, limits and requirements. And so when there's deviations from that, that results, as Victor described, the issuance of a notice to comply, and then we begin a negotiation process with the facility. So for Hyperion, specifically this incident, so we have been in ongoing negotiations with council for the city to recover. Because of the number of violations that have been issued here, obviously, the the goal is to recover, um you know, a significant amount of penalty for the duration of the event. And so all of the terms that I'm talking about, that's they're set forth in the Health and Safety Code, and also the defenses that a facility can raise, the legislature has defined those, the ability to pay, duration of the violation, efforts to improve the situation, and whether they go beyond to make um situational improvements um for the problems to not reoccur. So so essentially, we we have sent um demand letters to the facility. Um that information, I cannot disclose the details. You know, I have communicated some of the efforts to the city council to let them know and assure them that we are pursuing penalties, and we will work under the structure we we can um to make sure that, you know, this is doesn't occur again in the future. And also, if if that requires the entity to make significant expenditures, to make the improvements that the community has identified, um you know, we we can consider that, because we want this to be, you know, not an ongoing um incident that the community members have to experience. So I don't know if you have any other additional questions, and I hope I've covered sort of the structure in which we worked under to to recover penalties.
Yeah, I think that I think that helps a bit. Thank you. Um. Will a community monitoring and quality assurance plan for the fence line monitoring system be released to the public? For example, equipment calibration details. I I think what I'm getting at here is people want to trust that someone's making sure the system's working. Who can speak to that?
Hi, this is Angela Shibata with South Coast again. Uh so any details regarding any plan approvals or other documents uh are considered public documents, and those can be requested through a public records request. So once those are uh finalized files that can be released, that can be provided accordingly, in accordance with the Public Records Act.
Okay, um this question might be a little redundant, but I'm gonna ask it anyway. Um besides frontline infractions, we know that public reporting carries repercussions such as the notice of violations. What does the notice of violation achieve?
So thi- this is Nick again. Um what I'd like to add on to what what I already said is so a situation here where you may have, you know, a few notices of violation or a few things that can be corrected quickly, that typically is just going to be either fixing or repairing the issue, and then we seek a fine for, you know, all the the factors that I enumerated. In this situation, where you have a large project, um such as a replacement of the flares, we work, we use our other tool, which the legislature gives us, which is, you know, going before our independent hearing board and seeking an order for abatement. So what that does, and we need to either the facility, we either stipulate, um or we have to prove up um that they are in an ongoing violation. So obviously, the duration of the odor event at the facility, we identified things that need improvement, and so that's what the order for abatement does. You know, for the flares and for the items that we feel identified need improvement for 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 the event to not occur again, that's why we use the order for abatement, which is not a penalty tool, but it is a administrative tool where we try to, we use the hearing board to get conditions and an order to make long-term improvements to the facility.
Okay, thank you Nicholas. All right, well, let's see, next question. How can neighbors be assured their concerns are being heard, logged, and addressed in a more timely manner? And can the reporting process reduce the burden on the reporter? Uh the process, as I understand it now, to report odors requires three calls, one to Hyperion, one to AQMD, and one to another higher-level facility, which might be Public Health. I don't have that information in this question, but um that's my assumption. Uh uh the 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 second part of this is is they won't, the comment is they won't accept it as a report unless someone from the agency comes out here to confirm it. Since the fact that the plant is not in compliance, can't we just report all this in one place and that data be trusted to go to the proper agencies? Um perhaps like the Did You Feel It app for earthquakes? So I guess they they to sum that up, I think um how can reporting be easier and and assured that it's being heard and acted upon?
Uh I could take this one. And um as of right now, I'm we're not aware of a of an app that that can receive complaints and then send it out to the appropriate agencies. Uh so far, South Coast AQMD, the the best way to uh be heard to to uh to lodge your complaint, you know, your concern is to notify South Coast AQMD's complaint hotline, uh which is the one eight hundred CUTSMOG, uh or the one eight hundred two eight eight seven six six four number. Uh we also have other methods. Uh residents can file complaints through our uh online complaint system at www.aqmd.gov, or they can also uh file complaints directly from their smartphone. We have a uh both on Android and the iOS app. So uh you know, for for my inspectors, you know, we we do respond to every complaint. Uh I noticed on the the chat there was a a concern about our response time, and so, you know, it it's not, um you know, I don't want to really get into the the amount of resources that I have. It's really about our inspectors, you know, having multiple assignments. And, you know, I have an inspector that might have to um drive up to Castaic to to kind of deal with some of the landfill odor issues up there, drive back down to Hyperion, um if there's complaints lodged against uh that facility. But, you know, we we do evaluate uh each call. And so, you know, when we're seeing um uh complaints that come in for odors, but but maybe um there's a an issue at the facility, a breakdown notification comes in for, let's say, a problem with their scrubber or something. We 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 may make the decision to go directly to the plant to address the issue. And so that that might result in a slight delay in us calling back the resident. But we always do our best to call back on the same day or by the next business day. And so, you know, um all that information that that's filed with our agency is is data logged. It it goes into our system, and it helps us understand uh the dynamics. We we talked earlier about uh these odors being more prevalent at night or or in the in the mid-morning, you know, when there's different wind conditions or whatnot. Uh I my team, right now, we have um a team of inspectors that will be deployed in the early mornings um at the site, uh ready to conduct some odor surveillance in the area, respond to complaints if they come in, and just just be ready to uh to respond to any calls that we get. Um so our our field operations are are ongoing. We we were fully deployed uh in in the community. And uh just today, we we issued a a notice of violation to Hyperion uh for an issue that they they had with their their scrubber. We saw a a little bit of an elevated um H two S um level um out of their their uh their control equipment, their carbon absorber, which, you know, just uh uh was mitigated through some additional maintenance. And so, you know, uh with that, it's just a a matter of the residents, um when they experience an air quality issue, uh go ahead and give us a call. We have inspectors that that are assigned to to respond, to deploy into the field and and investigate the matter.
Okay, thank you Victor. Yes, I know some of our residents are big fans of some of your inspectors, so uh thank you. Um. Okay, next question. When reporting odors directed to the plant, reporters are sometimes given reasons such as we left a door open, the wind has shifted, it's trash day, etc. These answers are often received with distrust and feel dismissive. How can the public be assured that all of this legislation and reporting will make Hyperion more accountable and a better neighbor?
Okay, so I'll jump in and then Ryan, I think, will will add uh his thoughts. Um. Yes, we have changed our processes and procedures so that the phone calls that that are made uh go through our hotline. So if all of you um are aware of our hotline number, it's three one oh, three one eight, eight two, three two. That is the number to call. Um what we found in the past was that that when folks call um our control room, we have operators there that that uh pick up the phone, but there are control room operators that are monitoring all the activities at the plant. And that's where their area of focus is. So apologies if some of the responses felt dismissive. Um we realized that this was not the way to channel um folks that wanted to call in and raise uh raise the awareness of odors. So now we have established a twenty-four hour So now we have established a 24-hour hotline. Um, through that hotline, the the information is transmitted to our plant uh, management, and then is assigned out directly for immediate investigation. And we also include our uh, communications professionals who then pull that information together and share it um, as a response to the caller. Um, we feel this is a much better way to address the concerns of everybody calling in. And so if we could please direct you to this new number and not the control room number because that's not the place to go. Again, that hotline number is three one oh, three one eight, eight two, three two. Ryan, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, I want to add, and it's not technical, but I think it's important, uh, just to to say that if you've called the plant directly and you feel like your concerns were dismissed or that you got a flip answer, it's just, it's unacceptable. Uh, I think that what's exciting is the future. If that's been happening a lot, if folks have experienced that frequently in the past, just take the city's apologies and know that um, we're more focused now. One of the things that's um, encouraging once more is that LA Sanitation established all these protocols about who to tell about what thing that transpired at the plant. And it feels really formal, and when I learned about it, like, okay, who needs an SOP to know to tell someone that there will be increased odors because we're performing plant maintenance? Or who needs an SOP to be directed to answer a phone and be respectful and and hear people's concerns and give them a thoughtful response? Um, but it really is important, and um, I'm just, I'm I'm pleased that Sanitation took initiative to do this. It's going to inform exactly who we tell for all of a bunch of different issues. We tell El Segundo city officials about plenty of stuff. Um, we also want to tell the neighbors directly if we have something that we know will will be affecting odors in the future, like planned maintenance. Um, so please trust that we have a formal protocol in place now. And if you had an old way or a number saved in your phone and you just quickly called, please reprogram it to the new number that Tracy shared. Uh, that number again is three one oh, three one eight, eight two, three two. Um, and we hope that you'll receive better customer service in the future.
Okay. Thank you both for covering some of that. Um, all right, here's a question for the city. What grade would the city and the Hyperion committee give themselves regarding their handling of the ongoing Hyperion issues since the disaster?
I I think, I think that's a fair question. I I understand the frustration and the anger. Um, and, you know, one of the major points of this ad hoc committee was, let's be more transparent. Let's do a better job as a city of communicating everything we're being told about what's going on to educate the folks that live in town. Um, I think that while there's always room for improvement, our city is a much better place today than we were a year ago when we made our emergency declarations on this issue. Um, that improvement can be seen here today by the level of legislative and representatives we have on this call. We have a much better direct communication with not only LA Sanitation, but the mayor's office itself. We are are using that information to continue to monitor these 33 requirements that were put forth by the ad hoc committee to make sure that the plant gets repaired and this never happens again. So we have our dashboard, which is going to monitor that. The city has also retained our own sewage treatment expert. Dr. Stentrum is known throughout sewage treatment plants. He is at our disposal so that while we trust and we enjoy working with our neighbors, we've got someone on our side who can verify what's getting done so that we will always continue to monitor this progress. No, we don't have direct control, but we'll continue to act as the voice of our community. And as concerns are raised, we will communicate those to the the jurisdictions and the authorities in charge of Hyperion, and we'll help find solutions. Uh, again, I can't thank enough our uh, Senator Ben Allen and Maritucci, that the fact that we got that bill passed in a short of time that we did, and a large part too is from working directly with AQMD. AQMD is the authority in charge, and we had several meetings with them crafting this language to determine what they would find useful, what they would find another tool in their arsenal to help monitor and to help enforce the permit. So um, overall, overall, I'm proud of what we've accomplished, and I also recognize that the job is not done. This is far from over, and we're always going to continue to work.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. All right, so I'm looking at the clock. Looks like we have about 15 minutes left together, and that was the last of my pre uh, submitted questions. So we're gonna now go through uh, the questions that city staff has been managing um, through the chat, and I'm gonna throw some of those out to the group here, which I hope you will jump in and answer. Um, the first one, I think I alluded to earlier that um, residents are reporting that odors are worse now than they were before the spill. Why do things smell worse now? I know it's not all the time, every time, but it's a lot. I I I guess definitely watch our local community Facebook pages, and it's often that this is a a complaint. So can you explain what's happening right now that could be causing this?
That's a really tough question. Um, because the treatment process continues today as it did in the past. Um, we have made the corrective actions that 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 I've already spoken about. And um, we are hopeful that in the coming months, the the already low numbers that are there will continue to go down. Um, we do recognize uh, that there still is a sensitivity to the odors. I low, low values don't necessarily equate to no odors. Um, but the um, additional improvements that we're going to be making in terms of the capital investments on new odor scrubbers um, will make a difference as well. Um, so I can just say we are, this is the top of our priority, and we continue to do everything that we can um, to improve the situation.
Okay. Thank you, Tracy. Um, another question that we we touched upon, but I'm I'm seeing it come up uh, again and again in some of the chat online. Um, AQMD, can you talk to us about your staffing concerns? I, there are, there is a concern that there aren't enough people able to pay attention to what's happening here in El Segundo, here in El Segundo in a timely fashion, which again, I know you have a lot of responsibility, but can you speak to El Segundo now and and tell our residents how you're trying to stay on top of this?
Sure. Um, so I mean, in in terms of staffing, again, you know, our our teams are are fully deployed on the the field, and so you know, our our team that's assigned to um, to the Hyperion plant, you know, the we are, we are uh, sort of sectorized, and so they do have uh, uh, regions that they that they um, oversee. And so our inspectors will start their day in the field, uh, conduct their wo- their work, uh, respond to complaints that come in. Uh, occasionally, if we're if we're dealing with multiple uh, investigations going on at the same time, uh, we we may have to spread our resources out uh, to to cover all of them. Um, we do strive to to uh, respond to all of the complaints on the same day, uh, especially for a uh, situation like at Hyperion. Um, it is, it is based on what I've seen, it is a a rare that that we do uh, wait till the next day or a couple of days. And I know there may be a a few um, community members that might have experienced that. Uh, I did look into some of those instances, and and during those times, uh, so uh, the the total complaints for those days were were very low. I mean, we're talking single digits, uh, not really even to the level of a a our ability to enforce public nuisance, which is the uh, the six complaints that we need to confirm the odors with, uh, to take the enforcement action. And so, you know, uh, i- it's really just about prioritization at that point where if uh, the the facility didn't, has not um, reported an issue, or we don't identify a breakdown or some kind of operational issue, and where we've seen maybe, you know, two complaints, three complaints for that day, we will, we still respond to those complaints. Um, but again, it may happen at the uh, end of the day. Um, and uh, and especially uh, you know, i- if if we're getting complaints uh, during the after hours, right, we're we're, we have our our standby uh, supervisor wa- uh, keeping an eye on those complaints, and when we get a number of complaints, we'll we'll deploy an inspector. Uh, just like uh, on Monday, on Monday, we we are not open for business, our business hours are Tuesday to Friday, but our standby crew did receive uh, seven complaints. We did ish uh, send out an inspector right away. And uh, that inspector was able to confirm odors with four of the uh, the complainants out of the seven. And unfortunately, still, it wasn't uh, to a level that we could enforce public nuisance uh, at that point. But you know, we we are doing our best to be very responsive. Um, and uh, again, the same day, if not in some circumstances, the next business day. Um, and you know, especially if we notice uh, a a large amount of complaints, you know, more than six. If we're getting up to four or five, we we know uh, inspector, we need to pull an inspector from a different area and and start sending them over there to give us that best chance uh, to to establish that public nuisance.
Okay, thank you, Victor. So so even if we don't hear back um, that day or whatever, it's still important for the log to show complaints, right? Even if, okay. Because yeah, again, if people can't, don't hear back for three or four days, it's still logged and in your records.
It is logged. All the calls are logged in our records, and I I hope to never hear that it's three or four days. Uh, next business day um, is is uh, is what I'm striving for at at the latest. Um, and again, it's in comparison to activities that are happening at the plant. So if we if we notice there's an issue there, again, we'll we'll de- we'll deploy to the plant to address uh, a potential violation uh, ahead of of making that phone call to the complaining.
Okay, great. Um, all right, let me come back to the questions here. All right, um, this might be another AQMD question. What are the expected levels of H2S for a wastewater treatment plant in parts per billion? Um, when Hyperion is operating at the highest level, what is expected to be emitted, and are there any expected health effects at that level?
Hi, this is Angela Shibata with South Coast again. Um, so I don't know if there's a specific expected value because each plant is different, they have different processes, they have different capacities, they're 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 near different receptors, they have different wind patterns. And so there's not necessarily a a typical value you'd expect to see across the uh, sewage treatment plants in general. Um, but there are limitations on certain kinds of compounds. So for example, for H2S, there is a state ambient air quality standard, which is the 30 ppb of H2S averaged across one hour. So there are limits that the facility does need to adhere to with regards to H2S and other kinds of compounds. Um, as for health effects, I may not be the best uh, contact to reference for that, uh, being part of the permitting team, but perhaps that could be uh, discussed further with uh, Department of Public Health or uh, another entity.
Okay, great. All right, let me look through here. There's a question about the Hyperion 24/7 odor hotline. Um, okay, I s- I do see a post, several individuals have reportedly called the three one eight, eight two, three two number at different times, and the calls were not answered. Why is that if it's a 24-hour hotline?
It is a 24-hour hotline. This is a third party that we contract with for this service. Um, I did call the number today, and I did get an answer. Um, and will, I will check into why there isn't an answer. It's a 24-hour hotline. You should all be getting a response from a live person when you call that number. So I will check into that.
Okay, so do you have any advice for people that do call that number? Like, what's what's plan B? Not that not that, again, we want to put the burden on our residents to continue to report here and report there, but Tracy, do you have any advice for how to report maybe to you that they're not getting answered?
Um, that's possible. Um, I think that really the best the best line of action is to is to continue to work on that 24-hour line because that's where the channels are and the procedures are established to make sure that that there is an immediate response. Um, so uh, so so I would say that that's still the best place to go. Um, and again, I I will check in to uh, the point made that that there there wasn't uh, an answer from from a live person.
Okay.
And Tracy, do you mind if I jump in also? Um, was there an intention to share contact information for folks on the panel today? I'm happy to have mine be shared. I think uh, we work in close partnership, and there's no room between the mayor's office and sanitation on where the areas of emphasis are or how they're running the plant. However, technically, there is an oversight function. If something's not working or you feel as though the the hotline's been down for some time, I'm happy to be the contact person to hear that challenge.
Okay, great, Ryan. I think we will include all the appropriate contact information for you all um, on the city website um, after this. If we if we don't already have it there, we'll we'll make sure to add your name to that, Ryan. Thank you.
Sounds good, thank you.
Okay. Um, okay, here's another question I'm seeing. Um, when AV 1216 is enacted, what pollutants is concerned and VOCs will be monitored? I know some of that was answered already, but this part I don't think we've talked about. Is there a way the public can access that information like we do the H2S monitors?
Uh, so maybe I'll respond on that, and and uh, others can also chime in. So in in accordance to the legislation, it it makes clear that there is going to be public accessibility to the data. And um, in terms of what we'll be looking for from the South Coast perspective is that if that uh, pollutants are going to be measured in real time, that 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 um, would be um, in the plan to try to put that up on a publicly accessible portal uh, in in real time.
Okay, great. More more information is better. Um, all right, let me see if there's anything else that we have not addressed in here. Sorry, I'm scrolling. I believe we've answered.
Tracy, can I can I jump into and just say that to the extent any of our residents feel like a procedure or protocol is not working, feel free to reach out to the city government. We have a a good line of communication with AQMD and the city of LA. And as always, we're gonna, we're gonna be your advocates to make sure if something's not working, that we're gonna, we're gonna try to fix it for you.
That's great. Um, all right, I do have another question. Um, why do the current fence line H2S monitoring numbers change? For example, I see a level posted at 5:00 PM on Monday, and then I go back and look, look at that timeframe again later that day, and I see a different level posted at that time. What's happening with the monitors that makes that change of numbers occur?
Okay, I'll take that. Um, uh, the information, first of all, the the fence line monitoring is conducted by a third-party vendor. We do not have any access to uh, the the software or the equipment. It's completely held uh, by our third-party vendor, uh, Montrose. And um, at times, when they look at the data, and and I'm speaking for them, so when they look at the data, if there was some something not calibrated properly, or something about the equipment, or uh, um, information that was incorrect, they will go back and correct it. Um, there is a note that's made on the website there that the information being provided um, is for information purposes, and it's subject to further quality control and auditing, and may be adjusted for accuracy. Um, so does that complete, I'm I'm explaining their process. Again, we do not get involved in that and have no access to to any of the equipment or the the software.
Okay, yes, I think I I had someone explain it to me at one point of of it's an average over time, and that shifts based on, you know, when you're looking at it, it's taking an average of X amount of time. I I'm not an authority, I'm not really able to properly answer that. I'm just gonna share that tiny bit of information that I was given at one point. Um, okay, one more question. I think we have time. One last minute here. Um, regarding tank cover replacement, winter is typically when we get the most relief due to offshore winds. Uh, are the managers at Hyperion confident that when the onshore flow and heat returns, we will not be in the same situation?
Well, um, as I've been saying, we uh, we are expecting good results from all this work. Um, the to, at the last phase, we completed one milestone um, just this week. Um, and that will be the December 31st milestone, and the next milestone is in June where we complete the tank covers for the the tanks that are not in service. And then all of our primary tanks will be covered. Um, so, so we're we know that this is one of the major sources of odors, and by the fact that we are um, changing out these covers to customized fit and provide a tight seal so that all the air under the tanks can be pulled and sent to the scrubbers for cleaning, it's gonna make a difference. Not to say that there aren't air, other areas that emit odors, um, and that we will Not to say that there aren't air, other areas that emit odors, um, and that we will continue to work on. But we are very hopeful that this is going to make a difference.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, maybe this is one last question for you Tracy, I know I said it was the last question, but here's another one. Um, how can interested parties gain a better understanding of the facility? Are there tours open to the public?
Yes, yes, we would love to have you come and visit, there are definitely tours available. And I know Tracy, you were saying, as part of the envirom, environmental committee for El Segundo, you folks were, were out just, I think it was last month or so. Um, so we are very happy to host, um, tours and we have a phone number here. Um, you can sign up or look into tours on our website, um, L A city sand dot org. Um, I also have a phone number here, it's three one oh, six four eight, five three, six three. So you do need to make arrangements and, and schedule, uh, a date for, for a tour. Um, but we are absolutely happy to have anybody come down to the plant and, uh, we would be glad to show you around.
Yeah, and I will say it is a highly informational tour, um, there's great displays of how the process works. And then you walk around and see some of them live and in person. So, um, I do encourage anybody listening to take that tour if you're interested. Um, okay, so I'm going to wrap it up, I just want to say that, um, any questions that were not answered, the city staff has been taking note, or if you feel like we didn't answer a question here, please do reach out to the city to, um, collect that information and respond, um, we will do that. Um, we'll either get answers back to you directly or FAQ style, put them on the, uh, Hyperion page that we have. So please do continue to communicate with the city directly about further concerns if we didn't address that here. Um, with that, I will say thank you to everyone for joining today to share information and address our local concerns about Hyperion. And I thank you also for your work to build back community trust and ensure the safety of our residents, visitors and business owners who are neighbors to Hyperion. We will, um, as I said earlier, provide contact information for our participant offices on the city website in case anyone has follow-up questions later. But for now, I hope we covered a wide breadth of topics and information for you and I thank everyone for tuning in to watch. Thank you all, wishing you a good rest of the week. Good night.